I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on August 18th, 2022. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God.
So we have an agenda and consent agenda item for us. Do we have any changes?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll unfair the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion actually carries. Just doing a quick check in. Is Councilmember Stedman with us today?
He's out of state.
He's out of state. Okay. Thank you for that. First up on our agenda is public comment. I see that we have two written public comments, but we have no one who's signed up for public comments. That's still the case? No one signed up? Okay. Then we'll go into our next agenda item, which is under proclamation. And it's a proclamation for overdose awareness day. And Katie's gonna be accepting this, who's our opioid response coordinator. And we'll get started with Robin.
Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day shares the message that overdose deaths occur in all communities among people from every walk of life. And?
Whereas Lacey stands beside those who have lost loved ones to an overdose and who have a substance use disorder and are diligently working towards recovery. And?
Whereas overdose deaths are preventable and can be caused by alcohol, over the counter medicine, stimulants, and opioids. And?
Whereas, like many places across Washington State, we need to continue to treat drug-related harm as a public health issue and invest in best practices that save lives and build communities. And?
Whereas Washington State has implemented a state opioid response plan. And?
Whereas anyone can visit the statewide resource at wwwstopoverdose.org and help recovery line at 1-866-789-1511 for 24-hour information and help. And now therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2022, as overdose awareness day in the city of Lacey and encourage anyone whose life has been impacted by substance use disorder to call the Washington Recovery Helpline at 1-866-789-1511. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on August 18th, 2022. And Katie?
Thank you, Mayor. Katie Strozak, County Opioid Response Coordinator at Public Health and Social Services. I just have a couple points to bring up with the proclamation. First of all, I really want to emphasize that overdose deaths are preventable. And one of the first steps we can take is talking about overdose deaths, talking about how to prevent them, and also how to respond, especially to opioid-related overdoses and using naloxone. We encourage everyone to get trained on how to administer naloxone in the case of an opioid-related overdose. And Public Health and Social Services is happy to offer that training for anyone who's interested in learning. We really want to work on breaking the stigma around folks who use substances. Using substances should not be stigmatized, and we really need to be more vocal about those who have been lost to overdose so that those who are grieving family, friends, and community members don't have to do so in silence and don't have to feel shame in doing so. I'd like to invite everyone to join us for our Thurston County overdose awareness day event, which is held on International Overdose Awareness Day on August 31st. It's on the 31st from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Heritage Park downtown Olympia. Just the big grass by the lake, if you're not familiar. It's also where Lake Fair is held. We'll be having over 20 agencies participate, having resource tables, all kinds of free stuff, information available. We'll have a memorial altar. We'll have naloxone training and naloxone available for the community to take. And we also will have memorial crafting as well as a way to memorialize folks who have been lost. So I encourage everyone to join us on the 31st from 1:00 to 5:00 at Heritage Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And now on to our next agenda item, which is a referral from the Planning Commission, our 2022 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Ryan?
Good evening, Council. So in front of you tonight is an ordinance to consider the Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. As you're aware, the Growth Management Act allows our comprehensive plan to be amended once a year. These two items that you do have in front of you tonight were added by the City Council at a joint meeting to the annual docket back in January. We do have, the two amendments are, have been reviewed by the Planning Commission. Now you have an ordinance in front of you tonight for their final approval. We do have one amendment that was a city-initiated amendment. I'll go through that. And then Hans Shepherd, our senior planner, will go through a private applicant amendment that's in front of you tonight as well. So first, talking about the city amendment. This is what we call the low-density zone consolidation. As a reminder, back in the first of the year, back in January, the City Council adopted several initiatives from our Affordable Housing Strategy and Housing Action Plan. That's included a fee waiver program for profit builders constructing low-income units, extension of the multifamily tax exemption, and the low-density zone consolidation zoning change. So this amended our zoning code to consolidate two existing zoning districts, low density zero to four and low density three to six into one zone. The revisions tonight actually amend the official zoning map for the city of Lacey, which does require a comprehensive plan amendment as we have adopted our zoning map into our comprehensive plan as our future land use map. As a point of clarity, this will only apply to the city limits. It will not apply to the Lacey urban growth area, the unincorporated portion of the Lacey urban growth area, until the joint planning process with Thurston County is complete. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this map amendment back on June 7th. There was no public testimony received, and the Planning Commission has unanimously recommended approval of the amendment to the City Council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Hans. Hans will go through the private amendment, and we'll answer any questions you have after Hans' presentation. So Hans, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I put together a short slide deck for you here. This is going to run through the private application for a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone application. The property under consideration is located at 456 Carpenter Road Southeast. For a point of reference, City Hall is where the star is here, if you guys can see my mouse. And the property is located over here at the bend on Carpenter Road between Martin Way and Lake Lewis Habitat Reserve. It's approximately five acres in size. And it is currently zoned low-density residential. Right now, in this moment in time, there are two different low-density residential designations. This is located in a three-to-six low-density residential with a max capacity around 30 units within this five-acre parcel. If it were to be converted to moderate-density residential, that would grow to a maximum number of units of around 80 units within this five-acre parcel. And then just to give you an idea of what's currently located in the general vicinity of this location, to the west, we have around 23 acres of moderate-density residential. To the northwest, you can kind of see curved around over the top here, is Central Business District 7. And then mixed-use high-density is located to the north. And then to the east and south, we have low-density residential with a 25-foot strip of open space institutional that's located actually between the subject parcel and the properties to the south. In this slide, we have an aerial view to give you an idea of what that property looks like. And then also a street view as you're coming along Carpenter Road. You can see it from the road here, and then well, it's from the top. As part of this application process, we conducted a range of public notices, direct mailers, public meetings, emails, and phone calls to generally raise awareness about this application and ensure that opportunities for the public to participate were made. The timeline that you see here is the general timeline that we ran through of public notices and opportunities to participate. Within those outreach efforts, one of the things that we did was meet with Aldea Glen HOA. And this was a meeting between the applicant and the HOA president and treasurer. I did a summary here of just a few of the topics that were covered in that meeting. The HOA identified a few hazardous trees that they were concerned about that were coming from the target property and leaning over neighboring residences. Those trees have actually since been removed. There's also a triangular lot that they identified, and I'll actually scroll back. You can actually see it here. It's kind of small. It's located in the corner of the curb there that is owned by the HOA, and they were interested in whether or not the applicant would be interested in actually acquiring that lot. And I believe those discussions are still ongoing. And then they also identified some form of a slotted fence for visual and physical separation was identified as a desirable addition to any future development proposal, just to kind of provide an aesthetically pleasing yet physical barrier between the properties. And then there was a concern raised more in a general sense over the safety risks of entering and exiting Carpenter Road and conditions for walkers crossing the road itself in that general area. In this meeting, the applicant also expressed openness to support the HOA in efforts to improve the safety conditions along Carpenter Road to their ability. And then also, as part of the outreach process, we received comments from three different individuals, two in written format, and one attended a Planning Commission meeting. Topics within these comments typically address concerns over potential loss of trees, increased traffic along Carpenter Road, and safety and privacy concerns between low-density-style residential developments and higher-density-style residential developments. On June 21st, the Planning Commission met for the second time to review this proposal. There was a recommendation to approve the application. It was based on the application's alignment with comprehensive plan, housing action plan, the affordable housing strategy, and the public comments received and conversations with the HOA. I will note that one commissioner did abstain from voting over concerns related to housing affordability and shrinking ownership opportunities within the community. But after discussion amongst the commissioners, it was decided that this relates, would be more, or better addressed, I should say, through the implementation of the Housing Action Plan and the 2025 Comprehensive Plan update. And with that, yeah, I'll open it up and pass it back to Council for any questions that you guys may have and a decision on the ordinance.
Are there any questions?
You want to motion first?
Well, that's the question. I have this under ordinances later in the agenda, Dave. Do I do it now, or can I? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I would move approval of ordinance number 1621 to adopt the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I do have one question for Hans. It said that the developer would support the HOA around safety efforts. Can you explain what that means? Is that putting the impetus on the HOA to do safety improvements? Or is it they're hearing the concerns of the residents and they will address safety issues?
So it was a pretty generalized, high-level conversation at that time, since this is still just a rezone application. But as good neighbors, they expressed a desire to work with the HOA to raise awareness over their expressed safety concerns that exist along Carpenter Road in that area. I think a lot of it had to do with entering and exiting onto side streets in that zone, and then also folks that are trying to walk across and know that there is a bend in the road in that general vicinity. So there were some safety concerns that the HOA just more expressed to the applicant as future neighbors. And the applicant responded in the sense that they would help support the HOA in their pursuit of improving the conditions in that area, whether or not that's awareness or trying to get something to happen in the future. But specifics were not really identified at that time.
Any other questions? I just have a quick question. If this amendment goes through and we raise the amount of units that are available on that piece of property, I'm trying to understand where the ingress and the egress is going to be for that property.
Yeah, so the owner of this property also owns the property directly to the north of this location. And there are a few different curb cuts and access points already at that location. See if I can, yeah, actually, the street view that I had didn't really capture that. angle very well. But that would be further explored at the time of any kind type of development proposal. And it would definitely be addressed before anything were to actually get approved at that site.
Okay.
Does that triangle piece of property that the HOA was discussing selling to them contain ingress and egress onto Carpenter Road? No.
It does not.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance 1621 that will adopt the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is referrals from the hearing examiner. We have two. Their first one is Hicks Lake's Apartment 21-081. Smar, is gonna give that referral? Oops, you're on mute.
Yep, there we go. All right, can you hear me okay now?
Yep.
All right, perfect. All right, well, good evening, everyone. Before you tonight is the hearings examiner's recommendation related to an application received by the Community and Economic Development Department for a site plan review, wetland development permit, class four forest practice application, shoreline conditional use permit, shoreline substantial development permit, and shoreline variance. The applicant seeks approval to develop 178 units of multifamily apartments, including three residential buildings, various recreational facilities, a pier with a floating dock, and associated site improvements. The approximately five-acre property is zoned high-density residential and shoreline urban conservancy. The property is located at 2712 Hazelwood Lane Southeast on the west side of Hicks Lake, just south of Launcher's Park and the public boat launch. Andrew Reeves, the Sound Law Center, Lacey's hearings examiner, conducted an open record public hearing on May 26 of this year. The hearing was held as a Zoom webinar that allowed for public testimony. The council chamber was also available for live viewing and participation at City Hall. All public notices provided information necessary for the public and interested parties to attend and provide testimony. City staff and the applicant provided testimony as well as exhibits for the examiner's consideration. Members of the public attended the hearing both via Zoom and live at City Hall, during which 21 individuals provided testimony directly to the hearings examiner. The record was left open until June 6, 2022, to allow the submission of supplemental comments and arguments by the Deschutes Law Group and to allow the applicant to respond to public testimony and written comments. The record before the hearings examiner included community and economic development staff analysis, all the application materials and technical reports, and studies submitted by the applicant, comments from city staff and other public agencies, as well as 67 emails and letters from the public, as well as the testimony from the open record public hearing. The full record is documented in attachment A to the hearings examiner's recommendation and is posted on the city website in full, including the recording of the public hearing. Tonight, council has the full record before them, including the hearings examiner's recommendation dated July 22, 2022. The hearings examiner is recommending approval of the project, and details of the recommendation are in his report. Staff is available to answer procedural questions related to the project, but now I'm going to turn it over to Dave Schneider, our city attorney, for a few comments.
Thank you, Samra. Good evening, council members. Before you, as Samra just indicated, is a application that was submitted and completed last June of 2021. It's triggering the quasi-judicial process, and the hearings examiner's recommendation was, the hearings examiner created a record based on the documents and has made a recommendation to the council. Now, the council, in their quasi-judicial role, needs to review the record and the hearings examiner's recommendation. And then, council needs to make its decision based on that record alone. The council, as indicated in your packet, can either approve the application, council can modify the application, or council can deny the application. Any motion to modify or deny the application must include adopted findings of fact and conclusions of law that would support that decision. Now, the appearance of fairness doctrine is triggered in all quasi-judicial matters. As we've discussed before, the doctrine requires that government decision-makers conduct these sorts of hearings and proceedings in a manner that is fair and unbiased in both appearance and fact. So the doctrine prohibits any ex parte contact. That's communication off the record. Council members that have engaged in ex parte communication are required to place the substance of that communication on the record and allow any parties to rebut the substance of that communication. The ultimate test as to whether or not the appearance of fairness doctrine is triggered is whether a fair-minded person would conclude that the decision-maker was impartial and free from outside influence. So I am going to ask council as a group a few questions to determine whether or not there are any concerns of the appearance of fairness doctrine. So does any council member have any personal interests that would be affected by denying or approving the requested permits?
No.
Has any council member had any ex parte communications? This is communications off the record with, these are either oral or written communications concerning the requested permits with any proponents or opponents of this matter that's before the council right now?
No.
Has any council member had any off-the-record communication, either written or oral, concerning the requested permits with anybody either for or against the permit while this matter was before the council? That is since June of 2021?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Conkle, please describe the substance of that communication that you have had.
I have had two constituents approach me, asking me about the subject at hand. I explained to both the constituents that I cannot talk about the current matter. I can, however, explain how the quasi-judicial process works, to the best of my knowledge and understanding. Did not go into detail about anything regarding the subject at hand, but I did talk about the quasi-judicial method.
So was your conversation procedural in nature, as you indicated, related to the quasi-judicial process?
Correct.
And you didn't go into any facts, either supporting or against, the permit request at hand?
No.
Do you feel, or is there any reason why you cannot consider the requested permit applications in a fair and impartial manner?
I can be fair and impartial. I have no conflict.
Does any other council member have any reason they cannot consider the requested permit applications in a fair and impartial manner? Councilmember Cox?
I have pretty strong feelings about this project that I think are going to make it hard for me to have an impartial decision. So I'd like to-
So if you feel that you cannot be impartial, then you would, I would suggest that you not participate in this process.
Right.
If that is the case, then you would, I would suggest that you leave the council chambers for the duration of this hearing. Now, councilmember Cox, there is a second matter forthcoming. Would you have the same concern for that second matter?
No.
Okay. Then I would just suggest that you refrain from participation for either this decision or the subsequent decision.
Somebody, no one, it's time to come back?
Yes. Thank you.
So this matter is before this council. Is there any questions or clarifications about this project you would like to ask? So under the forest practices permit, it says, the record shows that a forester determined that the majority of the existing trees on this parcel is in poor condition, but there are two areas that have potential for tree retention. Do we know how many trees? I was having a hard time trying to figure out how many trees are going to be saved in this initial development?
The hearings examiner has recommended conditions on page 39 and 40 of his recommendation. Let me find, let's see. And it's, I believe it's conditions five through 11 that outline the, excuse me, that discuss how tree retention on the site will work moving forward.
So I still have a hard time trying to actually pinpoint that, but I see the conditions here. So for the most part, this matters before this council because of the 200-foot buffer, right? That is requiring a substantial development, a shoreline substantial development permit, a shoreline conditional use permit, and a shoreline variance. If it wasn't for those several things, this would be a permitted use. I know this wouldn't be in front of this council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So with a shoreline substantial permit, it basically says with any development that happens within the 200-foot buffer of the normal high-water line, if any improvement happens within that 200-foot buffer that has a value of over, just over $7,000, it triggers this shoreline substantial development permit. Then it goes on and says that there was planning on having, within that buffer, some amandies of, but it was within a 100-foot buffer, and since it was within the 100-foot buffer, it would have to be open to the entire public. Is that, that's according to our record. But since then, the applicant has decided to not have those amandies within that 50-foot buffer, and they're being completely taken out. Is that correct?
Condition number five of the hearings examiner's recommendation has a note, has two bullet items that I would refer council to about, that talk about items in the shoreline setback.
I'll add, condition 106 speaks directly to the mayor's question as well, indicating that the applicant shall submit revised shoreline restoration plans to address those items, either remove them or-
Yeah.
Yeah, rather to remove them, yeah. Because right now, there's currently a mobile home in a driveway that's also within that area that needs to be taken out. So my next question has to do with the shoreline variance in the dock itself. So a normally permitted dock can only be 26 feet in length, and it looks like at least 60% of that dock has to be graded. They're asking for a variance here because obviously that, the dock wouldn't support the majority of the use from the apartments. And so, we're trying to figure out what is the appropriate size of the dock. And we've come up with a, it's going to be a 128-foot pier. And the reason, according to our record, is that it's, this is going to be a multi-use pier or dock, and that is preferred over a single-use pier. I'm trying to figure out, there's only, I think, one other example of a multi-use dock around Hicks Lake, and I'm trying to figure out what's the length of that dock in comparison of this. So let's see if that are on par. Do we have an answer to that?
I don't think there's anything in the record that talks about the length of a dock that's not subject to this project. However, with the relation to the dock, the hearing does discuss in his recommendation, starting on page 27, all the rules and regulations of the shoreline management, as well as the local shoreline master program for weigh-in, shoreline conditions, use permit and variance, and the criteria that has to be met in order for one to be granted.
So it says that this variance is, has, it's only 11% of the, I'm trying to figure out what the, 11% of the dock going into the lake is only 11% of, I'm trying to think of what the word is.
I believe in the record, the hearings examiner refers to the 11% of the fetch of the lake.
Yeah, what's that?
That is a distance across the lake to the other shore.
Okay. So this current dock as proposed, it's only going to be 11% of that? And that's within the normal variance of other docks?
The hearings examiner identifies that it met the variance criteria in that it wouldn't prevent the normal use of the lake by other-
Okay. And that goes back to, there's going to be no power boats allowed at this dock, according to this record. According to the record, there's no power boats that are going to be allowed for use at this dock, from what I can tell from the record. It is going to have like personal, like flotation devices and stuff like that, but no power boats are going to be at this dock. I couldn't tell on the record if there's going to be cleats on the dock where someone could potentially tie up to that. Do we have?
My understanding is that it's intended, and I think, or, excuse me, the record, I think, indicates in exhibit 14, indicates, I don't unfortunately have the page number, it's temporary mortgage.
It's temporary mortgage, but with no power boats allowed, though.
Is there a question as to whether or not power boats are going to be allowed?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just pause until we can find the answer to that, because I don't recall seeing that.
Well, I do know that there's five or more power boats that would consider a marina. Marina is not allowed in this area.
On conclusion four, on page 37, the hearings examiner talks about the use of the docks, and it talks about that there wouldn't be any boat launch facilities at that location. That'd be at the general boat launch facilities on the lake, the open public, and that there would be temporary mortgage, but then people could launch hand-powered craft could be available off the dock, but not motorized craft would not be launched at that location.
And that no craft can stay overnight either. That's correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. And that's also in finding 49 on page 22.
But there's still a question if motor-powered vehicles could be on the dock or not during daylight hours.
Samra, do you have a reference location for-
Page 37, number four specifically says, a pier with floating dock would support swimming and hand-powered craft launching.
Yeah. So I'm under the impression that-
That's what I was looking for.
I'm under the impression that means there's no power boats going to be at this, allowed at the dock.
That's what the record would indicate. That's what the record would indicate.
That's a, that's a big, that's a big deal. So, I, oh, next I wanna go to the to the traffic study. Says that there's gonna be about seventy-eight new trips during peak PM hours. During peak PM hours. And that the applicant is gonna have to dedicate like twenty-five feet to the city of Lacey for right-of-way. Is there any, is there any plans for the city of Lacey to do something with that right-of-way that they're dedicating?
Hold on, let me find the condition, there is a condition that speaks to that. Apologies, this is a very large record.
I know, I know.
Okay, here we go. So, condition number forty indicates the, what the dedication and right-of-way requirements for this property will be. And that is on page forty-five of the hearings examiner's recommendation.
So, I see that they're gonna dedicate to this city. What my question was, is the city gonna do something with that right-of-way?
The, also on that same page of the hearings examiner's record, condition number forty-two talks about responsibilities for improvements to the development.
It talks about, there's gonna be, one of the conditions is gonna be a pedestrian a pedestrian corridor that goes from the property down to twenty-fifth. And then it talks a little bit about that it's gonna be somewhat temporary in nature until the Watchers Park is developed and that sidewalk is built. So, I'm trying to, once the sidewalk's built in Watchers, is that, the other improvements go away? How's that work?
So, there's, there's conditions in the record that talk about the improvements that are required with association of a development. The, it's difficult to talk about the next sequence, but typically in a land use process, talking on a higher level of a procedural process, you'll have a land use approval that will have conditions for an applicant to meet. Those conditions are then enforced through future building permit processes or other administrative approvals prior to construction. And then those constructions would be occurred on a on a time basis related to the timing of the development. So, we could talk about, we're in the record, the hearings examiner's addressed certain impacts and mitigations and implemented city standards. But the timing of that is something that is probably best for our later conversation in the detail. That's, because it's not something related to the record.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll point out the last sentence of condition number forty. Prior to, prior to certificate of occupancy of any building associated with this project, the installation and approval of half-street frontage improvements is required.
Okay, so there is, there will be half-street frontage improvements prior to the occupancy on Hicks Lake Road. That was, I was trying to figure out how that was, that was gonna happen there. And will that make it, instead of a, will that make it a full street at that point?
So, point of clarification. Condition forty says that twenty-seven feet of right-of, half-street right-of-way is required. That doesn't mean that they have to dedicate an additional twenty-seven feet. That's just the space that's needed from the center line to the back of the improvements.
Okay.
And so, they will, the improvements that they're required to install are noted, they're detailed for dash four-point-oh from the two thousand seventeen Development Guidelines and Public Works Standards. So that standard will be constructed. And if, say, the right-of-way from center line out is only twenty-six feet, they'll have to dedicate another foot.
Got it. It does look like there's streetlights that are gonna be added to this area. Well, I think that's the last of my questions I had. Does any other council have any other questions?
I got one.
Go ahead.
In the soil sample testing, the test pits, testing, test pits one through seven, you know, designed to go from about six to nine feet. And then the other test pits, one oh one through one oh four, go a little bit deeper. And for the most part, there was, you know, no caving or anything that was happening in there. But I noticed that for the south building, that the east side of the south building did not have a test pit that went any further than seven to nine feet. There was no second set of pits that went to the sixteen-foot level to test for the soil. Is there, is there a reason for that? I didn't, I couldn't understand why both buildings had test pits, you know, represented all the way around the building for the different depths. And then the south building had three pits that were the six to nine feet. And then only one pit on the west side of the building that went to fifteen to sixteen feet down because of the, there's gonna be sub, sub-level parking on, I think it's on both sides. I just didn't understand that as I was looking at the...
The staff recommended in the hearings examiner has, has recommended a number of conditions that were recommended by staff regarding what future submittals for these civil drawings need to contain. And so, those types of items are addressed in the stormwater conditions on page forty-three. And as a point of clarification, just on procedure, you're typical, typically on, during a development approval, the review of civil plans and the actual engineering of the project and approval of engineering standards and practices and the design, that occurs after the land use, after the land use approval. And so, our, so, we need to just ensure that there are conditions on the land use approval that provide guidance to the applicant in terms of what they need to make, ensure, is in their civil drawing submittals. And those conditions, like I said, can, on stormwater requirements moving forward are on page forty-three.
So, under the vegetation management, it says that the current shoreline is degraded by the presence of pollutant-generating shore stabilization features. And that one of the conditions is that those will have to come out. Is it the, is it the thought that after those are out and the vegetation management and the works done in this, that this will actually be a cleaner and better use for this property than what it's currently under?
Exhibit fourteen, which I believe is the critical areas report, as well as the mitigation plan, discusses at length the the improvements and the mitigation that needs to be done to clean up the shoreline and to improving the existing shoreline area.
And then it says, all existing septic tanks and the drain fields must be removed as a part of this condition of this approval as well. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
I'm gonna offer a point of clarification to the mayor's earlier question, just to make sure that there's no misunderstanding here. Finding of fact number nineteen speaks specifically to the dock. Finding of fact nineteen indicates, and I'll read it verbatim. Applicant is proposing to construct a pier and floating dock to support water-dependent recreational uses, including swimming and small, non-motorized craft launching. And then the second sentence after that says, "The moorage function of the dock would be intended only for temporary or day use." So I think that's just information that I wanna make sure council's looking at. And I'm not seeing a condition that there at no time ever be a motorized vehicle connected to that dock. That's just not a condition I see.
You don't see a condition under that?
So...
But there is a condition that it cannot stay there overnight. Isn't that correct?
There is not a condition about that, what there is. One of our standard conditions is that the proposal has to be developed in substantial conformance with the plan submitted on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And again, just a clarification on procedure. There are a lot of conditions that will apply to any given development that are incorporated into, into the plans when the applicant designs those. And we don't list out, I'm, you know, being a little dramatic here, but we don't list out, obviously, every single condition that would apply. The applicant designs their plans to be applicable. And if those plans are, do conform, that's why we have this standard condition. Is that basically we're saying your plans, you know, your plans need to be moving forward, need to be in conformance with those you have already submitted. And in their submittal materials, they have, as Dave pointed out, they're, have indicated that it will only be temporary and non-motorized moorage of craft.
Temporary non-motorized launching.
Thank you, yeah.
Temporary moorage, not overnight, day only.
Powerboat could tie in to the dock in the day.
Can, hmm. So, can, can you explain to us? I mean, that, that's a kind of a big, big deal. Is there additional conditions that this council could? Or you have to go straight off of this record? And can we add a condition that there's no power boats on this dock?
Counsel can, yeah, I'll defer to Samra. Counsel can approve, modify, or deny the recommendation.
Procedural question for you, Dave. When the, when it's time to make a motion on this, do we need separate motions for each, for the shoreline substantial development, for each of them, or can it be one motion?
Well, that depends on what council's motion is going to be. If council is going to adopt the hearings examiner's recommendation, then a motion to do just that would be incorporating all of those various permits. If council is to modify or deny, there needs to be articulated findings of fact and conclusions of law in support of the modification or denial. And I would suggest that council, if that's a motion council's gonna make, direct me to submit those to writing for council's review and consideration to make sure that they're accurately captured.
I'm not sure where this rest of the council is at, but, you know, the as a, under, we're allowing a shoreline variance here. And part of that variance is to make sure that we're not having a major effect on the rest of the people who are using the lake. I think that the one concern I have about allowing this particular variance is if you could tie up six boats, eight boats to this dock, that's eight more boats that are gonna be there during the day causing, I think, more of a hazard than if it was a single-use dock. Right? And so, I don't mind giving the variance and the length, but what I do think is it will have a detrimental effect. And we shouldn't allow the variance if there's eight more boats that are tied up to this dock every single day that then has to get in the water, tie up the dock, and leave, in the water, tie up dock, leave. You're causing a considerable more activity by allowing this variance. And I think that will have a detrimental effect by doing it that way compared to if we didn't have, you know, if we denied this, it would be a regular dock and you put one boat on it wherever. This way, you're allowing more use of it, but you're allowing more power boats to use to it, which I think will have an overall detrimental effect to the, to the lake. Yeah, so, I'm not sure what's the best way to move forward. I'm not sure where the council, the council agrees with me on, on that condition or that variance, or what's the thoughts about that?
I think that your position has merit, for sure. I mean, that is a safety concern, and it could affect the use of the lake.
What's the council?
I don't, I mean, I, I don't see it as that big of a concern only because I don't see them putting eight boats in and out every day. It's day use only, there's no overnight mooring of the boats there, so I don't have a big issue with that.
The hearings examiner does expand on his reasoning for that in that finding of fact on page fifteen. It's finding nineteen. Well, the, the hearings examiner states "The moorage function of the dock would be intended only for temporary or day use. The dock would minimize impacts to the shoreline of Hicks Lake that would otherwise occur from repeated launching and temporary anchoring of small watercraft along the shoreline."
But it doesn't talk about, power boats are not being able to use and moor there. The moorage function of the dock will be intended for temporary or day use. The dock would minimize impacts to shoreline, I get that. But there's a big change, there's a big difference between temporary, small use, like, you know, you know, small things, or, or large, larger power boats that are there during the day and the multiple uses on that. That's where my concern is. And to tell you the truth, out of all this, this is the one thing that I'm, I'm looking at where, you know, like I said, if this was out, if, if there wasn't activity within this first two-hundred feet, right, this is not something that would even be for this council. The reason why it's before the council is because there is activity that's happening that's gonna have an impact on the rest of the community, specifically the lake. And so, I would like to minimize that impact as much as possible. But I'm, I've, I've heard from two council members, I'm not sure where the rest of the council members are at.
If I recall from the record, the dock is supposed to be five feet wide. And it seems as though the applicant has submitted the dock with the intent of having it used for non-motorized watercraft. So I think at least the intent of the applicant is that it would not be used for motorboats or motorized watercraft, but for things like kayaks and people swimming.
That's, that's correct.
That's what I see reflected in the record, at least.
It's actually designed to protect the wetlands and the shoreline.
It's, and it's designed...
To bring them away from it by having the dock out further from it.
Absolutely.
So I'm, yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that particular, that part.
So I'm, yeah, I don't, that, I don't have an issue with that particular, that part.
I bet you agree, it's non-motorized craft, including small and non-motorized craft launching.
I think that is the intention here, yeah.
That's the intention. I'm just not 100% sure if it's clear. I mean, the way you prevent that is by don't have, don't have cleats on the dock where there's nothing to tie up to, and then it's, you've solved that problem. People will get in and out around the kayaks, and, but I'm not sure, right, you, there's no cleats there, there's nothing to tie up to, and you've solved that problem. So, Dr. Mayor?
What exactly are you suggesting that are you...
I'm, I'm suggesting that there be non, that this dock be used for only non-motorized craft. Only non-motorized craft can use this dock.
And I think that is the intention anyway, so I don't think that is an issue.
I think that's the intention, but I'm not 100% sure if that's spelled clear in this. And I'd like, I'd like to make sure that that is stated as a condition, if there's a majority of my council who supports me on that.
Well, I think the way to do it is to go to the point of making a motion and seeing how the motion, how it would come down.
That would, no, that, I, at this point, I'd, I'd direct Dave to make sure we get the motion right. Is that correct?
My motion would be to approve it as it is, though. I mean, that would not require anything for the city attorney to...
You can make, you can make that motion.
Well, I'll do that, then. I would, I would recommend appro, I would make a motion to approve the hearing examiner recommendation as stated.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we're on to discussion. I think my, my only discussion point, again, is I, I feel like there's a little bit of a gray area there. I think it sounds like it's the intention, but it doesn't clearly state that the dock will be, only be used by non-motorized, and that's my concern on, on, on this part.
Is it because of the, so many units and...
So, yeah, you, you have a bunch of units. Well, we're, we're making a, we're allowing a variance to have a larger-than-normal dock. Now, it's only 11%, I get that, but it's a larger, more normal dock, and the whole reason, our whole reason behind that is saying it's going to, because it's, we're, we allow it because it's going to be less of an impact on the lake and those people using the lake. That's the, why we allowed to have the variance. Well, that's, that's fine, and I agree, and I think that's a good condition, right? Let's keep the impact to the lake as little as possible. But if you allow tie-ups for motorized vehicle, you're going to have, you know, buddies who live in the apartment say, "Hey, why don't you come and bring out your boat for the day?" And now we have several boats that are on the lake tying up to a dock that we've allowed a variance to, to be there. And what I'm saying is, I'm suggesting that we, that's not allowed. That shouldn't be allowed as part of our variance. Sorry, any other discussion?
Well, may I have a question? We've all agreed, or, I think everyone agrees that that is the intention here, anyway. So is there any reason, even if we weren't to put in, any change in, in the conditions, the developer of this project could still have a rule in there that doesn't allow for, I mean, we're not putting a condition, but they could still have whatever rules they want on that dock as far as not allowing motorized vehicles and motorized boats, right? And there would be nothing stopping them from doing that.
No. That's, that's a correct statement, yeah.
Yeah, just checking.
Yeah, that is a correct statement.
But our, our variance could be abused.
I, I would, like I said, I would just feel like it'd be, I'd feel more comfortable if it was part of our conditions to allow the variance that only non-motorized watercraft to access the dock. That would solve it once, that'd be the end of it. There is a motion on the table, and a second. All in favor of that motion signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm the one, nay. But the motion carries. Next up is the next referral from the hearing examiner, the Hicks Lake Multifamily 20-190. Grant is going to do that.
So, there, there, are you, are you suggesting that there's no way to enforce after the fact?
Oh, there is. Hmm, I, hmm, hmm. You're up, Grant.
Sorry, I was lost in the, uh, motion there. Before you tonight, I'm filling in for Reese Phamp, the system planner who handled this project. Before you tonight is a referral from the hearing examiner to approve a substantial development permit on the shoreline, a site plan review, and a lane clearing class four forest practices permit to construct 132 unit apartment complex within the mini building, a recreation building, a pool, and, uh, yeah. So the, uh, am I, I might not have been through well?
You, you were coming in a little garbled there.
Okay, sorry about that. Is this better?
Yes.
The city's hearing examiner, Mr. Andrew Reeves, he conducted an open record public hearing on Mar, May 26th of this year. It was held at, via both Zoom and in-person testimony. The record was left open for a little while longer to allow the submission of supplemental comments and arguments by the Deschutes Law Group, who was representing the, some of the community members, and the applicant to respond to those comments. The hearing notice provided necessary information for the public and the rest of parties to attend the hearing. City staff, the applicant, and members of the public provided testimony and exhibits relating to the project for the examiner's consideration. The record before you today that the examiner created includes our staff analysis of the proposal as it relates to development regulations and the comprehensive plan, application materials, including all the technical reports and studies submitted by the applicant to support the application, comments from city staff and other public agencies regarding their analysis of their development regulations and policies as they relate to the project. Now, we also received 131 emails and letters from the public that were part of the record, and testimony app in the hearing itself, which included staff summaries of our analyses and reports, and the applicant and the re, their representatives presented, and 21 members of the public. And the full record is before you tonight. In the matter of a shoreline substantial development permit, the examiner creates the record and makes a recommendation for the city council. The underlying permits are included as a single application process. The council, acting in its judicial role, reviews the record and the examiner's decision, and as you've heard earlier tonight, can approve, modify, or reverse the recommendation by, but if it's reversed or modified, findings of fact have to be adopted to support that change in the recommended action by the hearing examiner. With that, I'll let Dave take over his piece.
Thank you, Grant. Council members, as Grant indicated, this is also another quasi-judicial hearing. The appearance of fairness doctrine still applies, or also applies. Does anybody have, do any of the council members have any personal interests that would preclude them from participating in this permit application? Has there been any ex parte communication by any council member with either an opponent or a proponent? And, and Councilmember Conkall, would the conversation we had on the last matter have the same, was it the same conversation that would apply here?
Correct.
So Councilmember Conkall, is there any reason, given that communication that you had, that you would not be able to render a fair and impartial decision in this application?
No issues.
Does any other council member have any reason that they could not act in a fair and impartial manner in rendering a decision with this application? Okay, thank you.
So again, is there any discussion on the hearing examiner's recommendation? Do you have any questions? Then I will jump into my questions. This you, this parcel is actually larger than the last parcel. This lar, this parcel's 5.31 acres, and the last parcel of the, what we just approved was smaller. But this parcel's only allowing 132 units to come in. And I see that it was originally going to be 205 units. Can you explain to me what happened? How did it go from 205 down to 132?
I don't believe there's anything in the record that shows why the applicant chose that change.
Okay, I, I couldn't figure out either. I wasn't sure if that's something that we imposed on it, or that, if the applicant changed.
No, no. If, if we had imposed it, there'd be a definitely part of the record of why that happened.
Okay. The other big difference between the, the application we just looked at and this application was, the, the forester has showed that the majority of the trees on the last application were, were in poor condition. That's not the case in, in, on this parcel. It shows that there are considerably more trees that are, are healthy. And then it goes on to say that, in one area, it says that all the trees are going to come down, and they're going to replant trees. But then later, it says, well, that's not actually the case. There's actually going to be 200, there's about 279 trees there now, and there, there's going to be 286 trees going forward, because a bunch of trees are going to be replanted, and then obviously about 101 trees are going to stay. I was still, I'm trying to figure out where those trees are showing where they're going to, what trees are staying, and, and how do we decide that?
Well, I'm not sure what you're looking at in the record there. The Exhibit 16 is the forester's report out on the proposal, and it identifies what the hearing examiner adopted as a finding, finding 14 on page 10 of his recommendation. And then he also adopted a conclusion number two on page 26 of the approval that, again, restated that the, the reconfirmed the forester's report.
The, the other difference in the tweet, this application and the last application was activity within that first 50 feet, first 100, 100 feet or 50 feet. In the last application, it again stated that if there's activity that is directed towards the water in the first 50 feet, it has to be open to the public. It looks like the applicant has then, in the last circumstance, has decided to remove those amenities from that area, and so that's fine. In this, in this application, there's going to be a patio and two park benches within that 100-foot. So is that going to be then open to the public, and there's going to have to be posted hours on when that can be used?
I think if you look at Exhibit 2 of this, which is the staff report on page 11, it will explain that things are actually going to be outside the 100-foot vegetation management zone.
The, the patio and the two park benches?
Yes.
Well, that was the other question, within the, within the 200 feet, the original calculations on the original, you can only have 30, 30% of that area be not, impervious. And the applicant first came in, it was more than 30%. It was, it was 34.16%, and in need, which was 38,000 square feet, and you'd go down to 30%, which is about 11,600 square feet. But it does, it says that as part of the conditions, they will go down to 30%, but that, they don't explain how. Can you, what's the process to determine to make sure that there's no more than that 30% impervious surface that's allowed in that buffer? What's, how do we make sure that happens?
Yeah, so as Samra indicated, this is not the end of the process, review process. It's, it's really the middle. And when, when those civil plans come in, which is the details on how they're going to actually construct things, and the building permit, which is how they're going to actually construct the buildings, that, that's a whole separate review process that includes our entire development review team, from public works to planning and the building team. So, and the whole purpose for that review process is to ensure that things are consistent with the previous approvals.
Mr. Mayor, on page 28 of the hearing's examiner recommendation, number five at the top, it talks about, "Prior to building permit issuance, a revised site plan must be submitted that includes the updates on the tree track, locations and calculations, and reductions to impervious surface areas."
Yeah. I, I, I did see that. I guess I just want to make sure how that is going to be enforced, and so, I guess it talks a little bit about the, before it's built, we're going to have to see the plans and make sure it's under the 30%. But, okay. Then I guess my last question is that, in, in this case, we're talking about the, the trips associated and the impact to the rest of the, the community. On the last application, it talked about there being 15 different project, or, let's see if I can find it. It talked about how many projects that it was going to impact, be impacted by the development. Let's see if I can find it. Anyway, in this circumstance, it talks about only 13 street projects being impacted. And the last one talks about 15 street projects, more street projects being impacted. I'm just kind of curious of how you figure out how, what's impacted or what's not when a development like this.
Sure. So I would direct you to Exhibit 15, which is the updated traffic report submitted by the applicant as part of the application review process. And Exhibit 26D on page 21 of the PDF, that is our transportation engineers' review and recommendation to Samra on the project. And that was formalized by the hearing examiner in conclusion one on page 25 of the decision.
Is, is there an existing dock on this property? No.
Sure, yeah.
In one place, it's, it talks about the applicant talking about they're going to have minimal interference with the shoreline and including the, I thought you said the dock was going to be, stay in place, but going through the plans, I, I don't see a dock associated with this property. That, I just see that... That, I just see that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's enough of my questions. Is there any other questions from this council? Is there a motion?
Council, I want to provide clarification, just again, to make sure we're all looking at the same thing. The patio with park benches, on finding of fact 15, it indicates that most of the benefits, the improvements, like the pool and all of that, are going to be outside of that 100-foot shoreline setback. But that, the proposed pathway and patio with two park benches would be located within the 100-foot setback. Then the hearing examiner indicates then that to qualify, that the proposed patio with park benches must be open to the general public. But this is different from the previous matter that council was looking at, because in that matter, the, well, it was clear there was discussion that they didn't intend to develop that.
Yes.
And so, they weren't going to have it be open to the public. But here, if it's...
There's going to be a patio, there's going to be, and it's going to be open to the public.
And it must be open to the general public.
Must be.
They could still come in with their plans and not put that there.
They could still come in with their plans, right.
Then it has to be open to the public.
So, it's the same analysis, it's the same application as...
It's the same application. In the last applicant, the fire pits and everything that they're going to put there, they decided to take those out because they want it to be open to the public. In this case, there's a patio and some benches. If they're going to leave it there, it has to be open to the public. That's correct. I thought, I thought I read that right.
Give me just a second. There is something in the record that clarifies.
I think Dave just pointed it out to us.
No, that was the conclusion, but, hang on just a second.
And I'm trying to confirm, are there, are there two septic fields on this property that are going to have to come out?
I don't recall offhand. I have to look at the record. Hang on just a second. Okay. I'm sorry, what was that question?
Well, I think, I think Dave answered the first question. That proposed patio and park benches would be allowed to be located no less than 50 feet from Hicks Lake as a water enjoyment pride that the seminary would be available for use by the general public. So, it talks about, if they're going to stay there, if the proposed patio and park benches are going to stay there, that they're going to have to be open to the general public. So, I think he answered that question. It goes on that same part to talk about the limiting of the 30% impervious surface. Because right now, it's 34.16. My question was, is how many septic tanks are coming out as part of this process?
I have far too many windows open.
I couldn't remember if it was four total or what it was. But that's going to have really no impact on this decision. Is there a motion on the floor?
I would move approval of the hearings examiner recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to...
Clarification. So, this is for project 20-190, the Gateway Hicks Lake proposal.
Yep.
Yes. Do you need me to clarify that in the motion?
Please.
I just lost it.
There's a motion to approve the...
I just lost it on there.
A motion to approve the recommendations by the Gateway Hicks Lake manage, Hicks Lake multifamily proposal dash 20, 20 dash 0190. That's the motion. And a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. So, next up on our agenda is the city manager's report.
Mayor and city council, I'd like to invite Scott Devlin up to the podium and provide a presentation regarding the rapid response cleanup team.
Good evening, city council, mayor and Scott Spence. Thank you very much. Glad to be here. I'm really here to show off our team members here. I want to introduce our rapid response team members. We have two dedicated team members, and you see there's three sitting here currently, Brett Sanders, Kevin Smith, who was just recently hired, and Rochelle Zalinski. So, Rachel, I'm sorry. Rachel and Brett were hired first on last September and came on as our rapid response team members. And these people are super dedicated, very, very hard workers, and they do such an excellent job. They're first in line for any sort of lateral transfer promotional opportunity, it seems like, every time one comes up. So, Brett was promoted to journey level, came off the team, and that's when we hired Kevin to replace him. Rachel was then, took a lateral transfer to the rack. She didn't want to, think it was hard enough work, so she went somewhere else to work a little harder. And so, we're backfilling her position, currently have somebody in line already for that. But this is really about this team. It's really about the public works support and the support for our local community. So, I'll get into the presentation.
Before you do, just so we're clear on names, Kevin, Brett, Rachel.
Should have them stand up and raise their hand, right?
Sure.
So, rapid response team, we come up with a mission statement that kind of comes in line with the City of Lacey mission statement, and that is to make the City of Lacey a clean, safe, and attractive place to live and work. You know, it's really what it's about. They're out there every day in the community, cleaning up the community, picking up whatever they need to pick up to make it a beautiful place and keep it that way. Let's see. Here's our org chart. So, they report in the, under the parks department, under the rideaway crew. And there's a couple of reasons we did that. It really makes a lot of sense for them to be in the parks department for the type of equipment and the type of cleanup they do and the areas they work in. A lot of the areas that they work in on a daily basis are rideaway sites. Right alongside of the road that you see driving through the city. And those are the areas we really want to maintain and beautify on a regular basis. But then there's a lot of cleanup, too, in the parks system itself. And so, for them falling under that umbrella of rideaways, it really made a lot of sense when we developed this team last summer. They currently work under a gentleman named Russell Greer, outstanding supervisor, great hard worker, so. And Jamie Oakland's their fearless leader, he's an awesome guy. So, here we go. Service. Service is one of our core values at the public workshop, and we really make an effort to serve the public. And so, service, putting others first, our primary purpose is to serve the public and every city employee. Always remember that you are the face of the city. Strive to make every interaction with your coworkers and the public a positive experience. And that's really what these people do every single day. They have amazing stories that they would love to share with you sometime. Here's a couple of pictures of them cleaning up. You can see Brett over there waving. It's a great picture. And Kevin and Rachel here cleaning up a site off exit 109. So, what do they do? One of the jobs they do is they do homeless camp cleanup. And this could be occupied or unoccupied camps. When a camp is unoccupied and left vacant for several days, weeks at a time, they'll go clean those up. Or if a camper is needed to be moved on, they'll go clean up that site and make it beautiful again. They will also go into sites at times, and they'll clean up around the area where occupied sites are to keep them safe and clean for the public, you know. So, here's a map of our homeless camp locations that we marked with the yellow dots and areas around the city that are most prominent. So, you can see, you know, sort of the corridor area, a lot along I-5, DOT rideaway areas, but then dotted throughout the city also. Here's another one up on Hogs Prairie, exit 111, that they also cleaned up. So, this is, this is just numbers, you know, for you guys to kind of like keep in mind and look at as we go through this presentation. So, this started September 16th, 2021, and the training hours, year-to-date, 110 training hours between the three of them to properly be trained to deal with what they deal with on a regular basis. That doesn't include the other training by staff, you know, cleaning up graffiti and their general job duties. This is just very specific for their jobs to deal with those hazards. So, homeless-related hours, 1,453. They cleaned up 96 camps. General camp cleanup, the roadside, so like just piles of garbage alongside the road, 225. Shopping carts collected 931, and those shopping carts, we used to take and recycle them or throw them in the dumpster. We would just smash them with a backhoe and throw them in the dumpster, haul them off. This team came up with a great plan to disinfect and return these to stores. So, now they take them, they pressure wash them, disinfect them, clean them up really nice, and return them to the stores. And you can see 880 carts that have been returned to stores, and we only had to recycle or destroy 51 carts. So, it's a pretty big deal. It's a lot of carts. Picked up 770 needles. Some sites have a lot at a time. Graffiti sites cleaned up 29 sites. That's not just 29 times they've cleaned up graffiti. This is 29 sites that they've gone to. Could be multiple times. I mean, they could have cleaned up the same site 10 times, but we didn't count that number in this report. Debris movement in tons, 29 tons. That is what we can keep track of. It isn't stuff they just throw in the dumpster or at the shop, you know, kind of stuff. So, their tasks, total hours, as you can see, DOT property is the very top one. 725 hours spent on DOT property, 1,113 hours spent on city property or city rideaway. Homeless camp cleanup hours on DOT property is one thing I want to point out. It's 675 hours where homeless camp cleanup on city property is only 106. So, it's quite a variance there, where we're seeing the activity and the camps that we have to clean up. Here's some pictures of just their cleanup activities, and you can see with the backhoe and the dump truck that these people need help from other city staff to go out and do bigger jobs. So, we bring out a backhoe and a dump truck. Before and after pictures are just amazing. You know, this is exit 108, Third Avenue, if you're coming off of I-5, heading northbound on the right-hand side, that's where that camp was. Here's exit 108, Slater Kenny, and you see before and after. And I'll click through these, these are just continued examples. Again, exit 108. Adjacent to I-5 Park, we had a big homeless camp fire that they cleaned up. It was a pretty big job. Exit 109, same thing, and another exit 109 cleanup. As you can see, these, a lot that they do, a lot to deal with. Under the overpass of DOT, Martin Way. Bike path, there's a lot of activity up on all the bike paths and so on and so forth, too. There's a lot of cleanup in that area. They also go up on Desmond Drive, DES property. And there, here you go, you can see the dumpster's full, a lot of stuff laying on the ground. Roadside dumping, as we mentioned earlier, just stuff that just gets dumped out. And it could be homeless activity, it could be just people dumping truckloads of things. It does happen. Getting back to the shopping carts, they collect shopping carts all over the city. And one of the things we've done to really help this along is as city staff are driving around town, they will either pick them up or they'll report back to this team, which they will go to that location to pick up. So, they're not like literally always every day, you know, roaming around town looking for these things. But we really have an army at the shop of, you know, 97 employees that are out at times, driving around the city that spot, things like that.
Is there sometimes we can't identify where the shopping cart comes from? Or do you basically know where they mostly are?
We basically know where all of them come from. Yeah, they're pretty little labeled. Now, it could be good times, too, where we, we have a, I think there's another slide here that talks about, we started tracking locations.
Yeah.
And there's multiple different safeways in town. So, you know, which Safeway does it come from? We don't know. Oh, here it is right here. Yeah, so, on 426, we started counting where the shopping carts are coming from, and there's two reasons for this. One, just to kind of track, you know, where they're coming from. But two, it was Target and Fred Meyer putting locking shopping cart wheels on their carts. So, when they leave the property, they lock up, right? So, we're seeing, does that really decrease shopping carts leaving the premises? I think what we found so far hasn't really been that noticeable. We have been finding carts with like one flat tire as they just push it when it doesn't roll. Kind of interesting.
Have you seen a big reduction, though, in those shopping carts?
It looked like it went down the first, you know, month or so, but we were still finding them out and about.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
What I'm finding is that, like, on Sixth Avenue, across outside of Fred Meyer, you'll find lots of Fred Meyer carts that nobody's picking up and taking back to the, they're abandoned sidewalk. So, when we drive by, we can pick them. So, there's lots of abandoned carts, there's less about homeless activity, more about just people coming in and out on the sidewalk.
So, next slide. Graffiti removal, we discussed. You know, there's been a lot, there's been a huge uptick of graffiti throughout the city this year. We actually spent, just at Holman Park alone this year, 51 hours so far, just painting over graffiti in the bathrooms. Yeah.
I had a question. As you go through these pictures, I've seen a lot of PPE. Are we providing that or are they having to bring their own?
Oh, no, we provide everything they need, absolutely. Yeah, safety is one of our number one priorities, for sure. And so, they are supplied with anything and everything that they need to have proper PPE and safety for doing their job. If they at any time feel unsafe, they can stop work and come get us, and we'll make sure that we take care of it the right way, or even hire a contractor to do that.
Any other issues?
Yes, work boots, absolutely. So, public assistance for vulnerable populations, there's been a couple of different things. There was a woman actually found laying outside in the rain overnight that they came upon and called 911, got assistance, got her help. Another person just recently just found laying by the trail. And so, you know, by Woodland Trail, they're laying there, and we don't know what's going on. You approach this person, are they going to be, you know, is there going to be a situation there of some sort? And so, they called to get assistance with them, too. It took quite a while, several hours, for them to sort of get with themselves and move on. But the AMS came and helped them out. And that's our presentation for today. So, here we got Kevin and Rachel at the back of a truck. You can see, you know, service with a smile here, right? They're, they're giving a thumbs up, giving the big smile. And if you have any questions, we'd be, love to answer them.
Just want to thank you so much for what you're doing. I know it's just a ton of work, and obviously, this is work that we have historically haven't seen at this level. And it's one of the things that I think we've noticed more and more is that just the amount of debris that's out there and, you know, the resources that this city is putting towards that to try to make a difference in our community is commendable, and, but none can be done unless the people are there doing it. So, thank you for, for everything you do for the City of Lacey. It's really, really appreciated.
Here, here.
Yeah, I just got to say immensely proud of all the work that the rapid response team has done. As you know, we brought the mobile outreach team to council. We also highlighted the community resource unit. This team is equally as important, and you know how important our impression is to our community in terms of how it looks. And these folks are on the front line to make sure that, you know, we're meeting that standard of what our community wants to be and looks like. So, really appreciate all the efforts. And when I see some of those pictures, it makes me kind of, you know, pause a little bit that what you have to do on a day-to-day basis to make sure that we keep that standard high. So, maybe we can actually have the folks come and shake the council members' hands and appreciate what they've done, so. So maybe we can actually have the, the folks come and shake the council members' hands and appreciate what they've done, so.
Graffiti on private property. We take on private property so much.
Thanks. Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
So Councilmember Greenstein brought up a good point. What, what do we do about graffiti that's on private property? We don't do any work on private?
Property owner, it just can't be helped.
I know in the past, and the reason I brought it up is because I had sent you an email to you recently about some graffiti. But I know, I get why we can't go on private property. But in the past, haven't we been pretty aggressive in asking the owner, property owners to take care of that?
We have.
In a pretty quick kind of way? Because I know the longer it stays there, the more graffiti it attracts. So I just, and that's why I brought it up with that.
So we do try to make multiple contacts with the property owner. They typically want to get it rid of as soon as possible, too. We used to in the past, when I think we had some resources, we'd get, say, gray paint and help them out if they need it. That's the extent of that relationship. But you're right, we do highly encourage people to remove the graffiti.
We have helped some people out in the past when it comes to graffiti, right? It's not, it's not a typical practice, though.
Right, we just have the issue of using public dollars on private property.
Sure.
And the only reason I brought it up is because the, the pretty bad one on college that I brought to your attention.
Right. And I think we're still making contact with that property, private property owner. So, yeah, a couple of other items there. I'm so excited about the Rapid Response Team being here. I feel like we have like the Beatles in town, so appreciate what they were doing, so. The other thing that we want to bring before council is our communication plan. And I'm going to have our Assistant State Manager Shelley Clayfong provide that report to you. Shannon.
Well, that's not the first time that's happened, so I will respond to Shelley.
Hey, people call me Steve all the time. It's actually Scott. Is it Scott?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. As Steve just mentioned here, we're here for the communications plan and to discuss that. I'm sorry, that's Scott, the city manager.
He needs some help with his communication.
There you go, that's why we have this.
So really what we're here tonight is for a motion to adopt the communications plan. This was previously reviewed by the city council at a work session at the end of July. It was also reviewed at a community relations committee in addition to review by the Commission on Equity. So I'm not going to give the full presentation that I gave on July twenty-eighth, but just really quickly, some highlights. This communication plan is really about enhancing communications with our community members, which also means our city staff. So it's really focused on internal and external, as well as strategic communications. So the goal is really to make sure that we can provide the best two-way communication and engagement as possible with our community members. And we really mean our residents, our business owners, visitors, you know, people who work in the city, partner entities, city staff, volunteers, council members, et cetera. This plan was put together through a more than two-year process where we learned a lot of insights shared through a variety of engagement efforts, including our Lacey Cares Initiative back in two thousand twenty-one, internal interviews, a internal SWAT analysis, and business and community surveys. So I just went over what our target audiences were, so I won't spend too much time on this. And also our primary sources, again, being Lacey Cares Business Survey, that SWAT. And also, an additional thing to add was also that we did a environmental scan of best practices. So what were other jurisdictions doing? What were their private practices doing as well to improve their internal and external communications? So looking to the goals that you find in the plan, like I mentioned, one of the focus areas is internal focus. So goal number one is to augment internal communications to increase cross-departmental collaboration and awareness. And connected with each goal, you'll find targeted actions. And I'm not going to go over every single targeted action, but just to highlight a couple of them. Our, our internet communication systems, which would allow a much more effective and efficient way to communicate internally. Having a document-wide management system, which improves internal communication, but will also improve external communication. Having consistent branding, a mobile robust three-one-one system, which will allow community members to connect with the city on things that they're seeing, you know, whether it's compliments, concerns or questions out in the community. And then also leveraging other technologies and tools. An example would be, you know, Trackett in addition to three-one-one. And also our municipal code online publishing, our public records system. So really augmenting those so that we can have the best connection and connectivity internally as well as externally. Goal two is the external focus, which is to continuously evaluate and enhance external communications to provide transparent, timely and accessible information to community stakeholders. And a couple of targeted actions that fall under there are, again, leveraging email, text and other technologies. Doing more consistent engagement and outreach. So for example, every two years, conducting a statistically valid survey, in addition to doing annual reviews on the communications plan. Working to create a language access plan. And then really working to help expand and standardize communication processes with our external stakeholders. The third goal is strategically focused, and this is to proactively craft communications and establish a defined Lacey brand. And some targeted actions that fall under this goal are to create a consistent citywide style guide, logo, flag use policy. Refine key messages to really create a unified voice for city priorities and initiatives. To enhance our marketing and branding campaigns. And to implement our communication policies, which are attached in the communications plan.
So does that brand include like a new logo? Are you talking about a new logo there when you talk about branding?
Not talking about a new logo. This would be more about all of our materials and making sure that there's, you know, consistent look, feel, voice to them. So the advantages of adopting this plan would be providing a six-year framework for ensuring more effective, relevant and timely internal and external communications as the city continues to adapt to the constantly changing environment that is the city of Lacey. There are really no advantages, disadvantages, I should say, to adopting this plan. And there's no fiscal note associated with the adoption of the plan, but it is worth noting that several of the items that are found in the plan, you know, as we proceed with implementation, would have a fiscal impact. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. And again, we are here tonight looking for a motion to adopt the communications plan.
I move that we adopt the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven communications plan.
Second.
Let's move in second. Discussion. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Well, as, as the person probably on this council who has said the most about the need to have, to improve our communications, I'm so excited to see this. And I really want to commend you, Shannon, for your leadership on this and the product that you're delivering here. I think we're going to see great things coming. And the better we communicate with our community, I think the happier the community is going to be, so thank you.
One quick question. How does, how does a three-one-one work? Is, is like a pound three-one-one and then, and then like you get response from and you can ask questions, too? How does that?
It's a great question, Deputy Mayor Miller. And so currently, we have a stop-gap three-one-one in there. And it's not so much that it's phone-based, it's really trying to find online ways to connect with individuals. So if you go onto our website right now and you go under the Contact Us, you'll see the Lacey three-one-one. And it's basically a way for people to fill out a preloaded form. So for example, if you had, let's say you wanted to pass on a compliment to our Rapid Response Team, you could fill out, I have a compliment, and fill out, I'd like to thank the Rapid Response Team for all of the hard work that they're doing in our city's rights of way. And that would get routed to the correct person automatically. So there wouldn't be somebody who needs to send that off and ensure that it gets to the right person. And that's what we have right now, and that's just a stop-gap. What we're really looking to do is to create a much more robust system that would allow community members, again, to contact the city through a variety of ways. So one would be through embedding it in our website like we currently have, but in a much more robust way. And what I mean robust, it would allow you to drop like a, you know, a GPS pin of the issue. It allow you to provide multiple photos. Currently, you can provide photos. It would allow you, you know, to request certain responses or get automated responses on issues. But when we want to expand that, we want to make sure that there's multiple ways that people could connect with the city beyond going onto our website. So another thing that the system would allow individuals to do if they so choose is to download a mobile app on their phone so they could just directly open that and, you know, again, send in those questions, comments, concerns or compliments to the city. In addition to that, it would have connectivity with social media platforms. So for example, our Facebook and Twitter would also be another way that individuals, you know, could send that feedback back to the city as well. And then, you know, some operability also with other digital platforms that are out there. So the whole idea with the three-one-one system is to really try to nudge community members to use a system that will allow us to automate a lot of the workflows behind the scene so that it can get to the correct person for response in the quickest way. And also for it to be extremely accessible for those community members. So we don't want to have barriers for them to have to contact the city, but to be able to provide it, you know, at their fingertips.
And if the correct person is like the county department of health or something like that, would that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we're, you know, going to be working all of this out as we look for the technology solution that's going to best fit us. But the ideal state would be that if it was something that a service that we didn't provide, that it would be able to say, this is not a service we provide, please contact, you know, whoever the most applicable party is and give them that information so that they can do that.
Thank you. I guess you just answered my, my next question. Since we haven't actually adopted the plan yet, we haven't picked a company we're going to go with for, for this system. I know there's a lot of different companies out there that are, that are helping jurisdictions and cities do this type of work. And so have we been, have we had eyeballs on one? And we have a favorite where we not even begun to look at which technology and which app we're going to use for the city of Lacey?
Yeah, at this point, Mr. Mayor, we've just done an environmental scan and identified that this would be a really good technology to use at the city. So the next step would be to evaluate what vendors were out there.
Yeah, there's, there's several really good vendors out there. I've seen a couple of them. The other big interesting part of this is that we're going to conduct a statistically valid bi-annual community satisfaction survey to better understand community sentiments, including strengths and opportunities for improvements. Are we going to do that in-house? Or are we gonna, are we gonna work with a consultant or something to, to do that survey? What's, what's the plan there?
So, you know, we'll certainly evaluate both in-house and externally, but the idea being that we would be able to provide questions that we, on every single survey, every two years, provide. So we'd capture that longitudinal, are we moving the needle on certain items? Are community sentiments changing? There are, you know, several firms that do this for municipalities out there. So we'll certainly evaluate, you know, what our options are as we move forward. As identified in the plan, we'll be looking to do the first one in two thousand twenty-three. So we will certainly be taking a deep dive into that here pretty quickly.
Yeah. Any other question?
I also just wanted to say how excited I am that developing a language access plan is a part of this because I feel like that helps our community not just be more connected, but also safer, right? Because there are members of our community who are English language learners and being able to communicate with them in their language is just incredibly important for a city. So I can't wait to see that develop.
I appreciate the work the Commission on Equity has done on, on that part of this. Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and segued, oh, go ahead. Oh, it's been moved and segmented to adopt the communications plan for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven. All in favor of that motion, signified by a sane eye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And the motion obviously carries.
Steve has a couple more things.
Do you?
Yeah, I do. So as per Resolution ten six seven, reporting out a couple interlocal agreements that I've signed in the last thirty days. One is for specialized recreation program. This is a partnership with Thurston County as well as Olympia and Tumwater. We're contributing about eighty-four hundred dollars on an annual basis. This program provides specialized recreation for persons with disabilities. We've been in this program since the nineteen nineties. This current agreement runs through two thousand twenty-four. The next interlocal agreement is an RFP to solicit any interest in wanting to collaborate on managing our public education and government program or community access and related facilities. We are working with Thurston County, Olympia and Tumwater on this. As soon as we have an RFP and find out solicitation from potential interested parties, we would then evaluate that. And that could lead to an additional interlocal agreement. That expires in two thousand twenty-three, July eighteenth. That's the end of my report.
Thanks, Sean. We're going to go on to standing general committees. First up is the Finance and Economic Development Committee, which met on July twenty-sixth. Our first agenda IM was looking at our two thousand twenty-two second quarter investment report. You know, I think it's safe to say right now, there's, no one's making a ton off their investments. But we, the staff did advise that the strategy will be, will be to remain at or slightly above the duration benchmarks to take advantage of a multi-year high yield levels. So basically, we're trying to be as flexible as possible. We had had some more flexibility into this. So, you know, as the rates are going up, we can be able to take advantage more of those in the future. Next, we discussed our two thousand twenty-three budget calendar. You know, and, and so far, we have fared, you know, fared pretty well during the ongoing pandemic. And we can see, continue to see, you know, pretty strong numbers, actually. You know, for example, our new construction sales tax has rebounded with year-to-date increases of like thirty-one percent. And then also through the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two, our admissions and gambling taxes are eighty-one percent and seventy-five percent respectively of the two thousand nineteen collections going back pre-pandemic. So, I mean, things are going pretty well. Of course, we're still being cautious. For example, our, our general merchandising stores has just increased about one point nine percent through the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. And if you look at what inflation has done, you know, it's, it's most likely that we've actually seen volume decrease in our general merchandising category, which is our biggest category. So, you know, some areas are doing really well, other areas were, you know, were cautiously optimistic. But the one really interesting thing about this is that, you know, I think it's been pretty well documented how difficult it is to find labor. That continues to be the fact here at the city of Lacey. As a matter of fact, you know, we, we have nearly, you know, ten percent of our vacancies. We still have about ten percent vacancies right now? Well, what that does is since we have so many vacancies, we're, we've only expanded about thirty-four percent of our benefits when it comes to that. So that's the good news. The bad news is we have all these, you know, vacancies we're still trying to, you know, fill. So the result is we, you know, about maybe as much as three million dollars underspent just through May when it comes to our, our labor alone. But obviously, their city manager is taking into all this accounts. And our, our proposed budget calendar is, you know, it'll be presented on October twentieth. There'll be public hearings on the seventeenth and December first. And then the final budget is scheduled to be adopted on December fifteenth. Then talking about staffing resources considerations, the city manager did brief the committee on several needs within the city that's ongoing. There's recommend, there's a recommendation that one transportation civil engineer and one journey-level technician is needed. The city currently has two civil engineers covering sixteen different transportation projects in various stages and another nineteen scheduled for two thousand twenty-three. So we're trying to, you know, keep up on, on that. There's also a need for a senior maintenance technician and two journey-level technicians, which are currently maintaining about, you know, ninety-five structures with another recently just acquired. And we know that down, down Long Lake. So there's ongoing needs there. We're also have a journey-level technician that's needed. So that is the end of my report. Onto the General Government and Public Safety Committee.
General Government and Public Safety met on July twenty-sixth. We had a four-item agenda. We discussed, the first topic we discussed was the neighborhood grant program and some potential changes to that program. So in the past, that program has been specifically for HOAs and organized, you know, organized HOA communities. And one of the changes that are being looked at that'll be coming before this council is to actually open that up to neighborhoods that don't necessarily have is to actually open that up to neighborhoods that don't necessarily have an organized HOA. The committee was pretty supportive of the idea, and that will come before this council here in the near future. Second item on the agenda was Chief Omata discussed how, what they do with firearms that come into possession of our police department. They come into possession of the department for many different reasons, whether it be evidenced from a, you know, from a crime, or sometimes people actually volunteer and bring guns to the city. And he went into detail about how those are disposed of. They're actually all taken to a facility in eastern Washington and destroyed. The third topic was the 2022 fireworks calls. Interesting, the calls were, 911 calls for fireworks were down this year considerably. There were actually only eight calls for service. So I think the public service message that the police and fire have been putting out there is actually working, because that was the goal, is to not have people calling 911 for what is not really an emergency. We want to keep that line open for true emergencies. And then the last item on the agenda was a very thorough briefing from our irrigation management program, from Rick Hood, who went into great detail about our irrigation systems throughout the city and the work that they do. And it's truly amazing. I mean, they have 83 separate systems throughout the city, and they just do a remarkable job of keeping all of that running and keeping our fields and everything else green and in good condition. So that is the end of my report.
Thank you. And I was able to make that, that first Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, but I wasn't able to make the General Government Committee meeting, because I was in Atlanta for a National Ecology Conference. But I was very pleased to see this report and talking about the neighborhood grant program. I actually brought this forward and talked to, I think, I talked to the city manager and saying, you know, there's a lot of older neighborhoods in the city of Lacey, and those older neighborhoods, in many cases desperately need a little help, but because they aren't an HOA, they don't get to qualify for our grant program. So this was actually something.
Yeah, that sounds right.
It'll be a good change.
It's a great change.
And it's a great program. I mean, you know, it's a matching grant, so we're, they're matching it either with their labor or money, and it's all for projects that better our community. So it's a great program.
I was pleasantly surprised when I saw that, because I was, it was actually a discussion I was just having with other elected officials about this, like, is there, are there things that in your community that you're, there's unintentional consequences of doing business as always? And this was something that was sort of brought up, that's like, well, if you're not into specific things that are you, are you not allowing a benefit? And so, anyway, it's just, I was really happy to see that. So next up is the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So we met August 1st with a couple of action items, one being the application for the Washington Center for Performing Arts. We had allotment for two different groups to choose from. Our committee decided, out of the six contestants that were looking for an opportunity to perform, I believe the committee chose the South Puget Sound New Horizons Band and the Nisqually Delta Association, and that was our recommendation to bring to full council.
So is there a need to be a motion?
That's been the past practice.
Can I, can I get a motion?
Moved to approve the Washington Center applicants chosen by our Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
The second action, Spirit of Lacey Award recommendation, the committee met and discussed that as well. And I'm going to let Councilmember Cox talk about this individual.
I'd be happy to talk.
The decision was to recommend that the award be presented to longtime community volunteer Ruth Weigelt. Ruth exemplifies the spirit of community service in so many ways, and we really felt like we wanted to give her a wholehearted recommendation that she get this honor.
And I'd just like to add to that, Ruth is someone who I've been talking about for quite a long time about very deserving of the Spirit of Lacey Award. We all, of course, we all recognize Ruth as sort of the, you know, the mother of Lacey, because everything she's done for this community, specifically around the Lacey Fund Fair and the years she's given to the Lacey Fund Fair, that alone. But just also the work she does with the North Thurston Public Schools, the constant work she's, she's done on behalf of education and Lacey is, is amazing. And on a personal note, the work that she's helped with helping get the Lacey Community Foundation off the ground, you know, she's been there from the beginning, working with, you know, my, my wife on, on getting the Lacey Community Foundation off, off the ground, and as a sounding board, someone to talk about, you know, what's the best approach and how we get that done. So she's continued to be just a wonderful advisor on that. So there's just so many, so many reasons why I believe she deserves the Spirit of Lacey Award, and I appreciate Jen, you know, doing this nomination. And of course, Ruth, we love you, and thank you so much for all you do for Lacey.
I would just add, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to find someone more deserving of this award. I mean, we've given it to, I forget how many, but very few. So it's, it's something that, you know, we take very seriously. It's not something we give out every year, it's not something that we give out easily. But Ruth is, you know, I mean, there's no better person for this award. She's done so much in this community.
So I will make the motion that we award the Spirit of Lacey Award to Ruth Weigelt. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Of course not. That motion passes unanimously, and we look forward to celebrating Ruth with this Spirit of Lacey Award in the upcoming council meeting. And with that, that's the end of the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee. Onto the Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee met on August 2nd. We had a Transportation Benefit District 2021 report, and in that report, we found that our revenues beginning 2021 was 4.8, a little over 4.8 million, and our expenditures were a little over 4.1 million. So we had some money left in that budget. We did go over all the completed projects for 2021 and the carryovers from 2020, like the pavement and reconstruction, the manhole valve patch rehab, and all the slurry seal that's been done around the city. Most of us have a neighborhood that has been slurry sealed. Literally tons of fiber reinforced HMA, all the, all the different projects, some of the projects that, that we're hoping to complete will, will be pushed into the spring, because there's, there's roadwork that, that we want to do, but it, it makes it difficult to do it during the school year, because part of those projects are Carpenter Road. As you guys know, Carpenter Road is, is still one of those roads that we are striving to complete, and has projects right in front of the bus barn. And so it's, it's best oftentimes that we delay a project until it is going to have the minimal impact. So, but also on, on the, on the schedule is Rainier Road. You guys probably remember the, the waterway being flooded, the road being flooded with water. And, you know, we, we talked about, is there any way to mitigate, you know, that situation? Like, even if we dug a trench, Scott thought that was pretty silly of me to say we should dig a trench and let the water flow. Not Sean. Scott, Scott the engineer. And so the valve manhole cover repair work will continue also next year, and, as well as the overlay work. And that is my report.
Just to check in real quick with the council, do we have a bunch of committee reports tonight?
I have one.
I got none.
Okay. Well, I don't have one. I figured if we had a lot, I might suggest moving it over. It's been a long night already, but let's go through them, since it doesn't look like we have too bad. First up, our boards, committee, commissions, and community reports, is myself, but I do not have a report.
I also have no report.
Tech Mayor doesn't have a report. Councilmember Cox.
Regional Housing Council met on August 10th. Received some updates on the Housing and Essential Needs Program. This program helps prevent homelessness for adults who are unemployable by providing them with basic needs. County Housing and Social Services staff is keeping payments going.
Is keeping payments going while seeking an entity to take over the program, because the contract that the county had with Community Action Council was not renewed. They have contracted with a group called Partners in Prevention Education to handle case management so far. And they've been working with a, an agency in Seattle called Live Stories, which is issuing rental assistance checks. But they're still looking for an agency that's going to take over, formally take over the program, as well as a program called Rapid Rehousing. This totally, this affects a total of about 380 clients, whose, whose services are hopefully not going to be disrupted too much. We also got an update on the right-of-way funding from the state. I think I reported last time that we're in line for 380 million, which is about twice what they said that we could have. This money is going to pay for the purchase of one hotel, plus $5 million to rehabilitate the hotel, and $2 million for two years for operating expenses for programs there. This will enable us to provide some sort of transitional housing shelter to begin with as we, and as we redevelop the hotel, hopefully use most of it for permanent supportive housing, which has been a goal of our council all along in addressing homelessness. So really exciting to see that coming along. My other report is about the lot Clean Water Alliance, which also met on August 10th. I think probably of most interest is that we set preliminary rates for 2023, 2024. We're going to stick with the traditional 3% inflationary adjustment in rates. We also got updates on biological improvement process. That's moving into, well, they're moving into the third phase of that now. We are continuing public outreach on reclaimed water study. There was a community meeting on that this, earlier this week. And then we had an executive session in which we discussed and came out and voted on a salary and package for Matt Cannelli, who is going to take over later this year as Executive Director of the Clean Water Alliance. So that's my reports.
Thank you. So the, all the information going on about the right-of-way and the state assistance, you know, it's funny, we basically begged the state for several years to help us, help us, help us, and then now they're like throwing money, throwing money, throwing money. And it's, it's changing, almost seems like, you know, every day there's some new information that's coming out that we're working on. Obviously, the city manager is going to continue to try to keep us in the loop as much as possible about, you know, all the different things that are going on when it comes to this money and how it's being used. And so it's sort of a, we'll see tomorrow what else comes up, but there's a lot going on, to say the least, about this. For the most part, I feel like it's, it's good news. There's always the question, though, you know, it's like, now we're feeling like we're almost out of any of the decision-making process in some of this, which is a little bit concerning. And so I hope we can, the state is, is listening, and will continue to work with, with Lacey and this jurisdiction on, on making sure we have a, a, a good solution that's going to work for our, our community when it comes to how we're dealing with people in the right-of-way. That's my two cents on that. Councilmember Greenstein.
I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one this evening for the Visitor Convention Bureau. We met on Tuesday. Highlights were, we had to approve a mid-year budget revision, and our CEO marketing report, we covered that. We're seeing an uptick in unique web visits with the social media traffic and our new and improved online marketing. And the sales team is working on bringing more sports events to our community, as well as a district conference for the Master Brewers Association, which they're going to have at the Heritage Distilling Complex in Tumwater. Hotel occupancy rates have been a little bit in decline for June, but the revenue growth has increased per cost of room. And that is about all I had to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez.
When's that, Brewers Conference?
Good question. We should hang out. Maybe we don't know yet. Just one quick report for me. Orca met last week, and we did the review for Jeff Johnson, who is the new Executive Director of Orca. He's been in the job for six months, and everybody on the board and unsolicited members of his own staff gave him glowing remarks, glowing reviews. So he's been doing a great job over there, and he's going to stick around. The one other thing I wanted to share is not a committee, committee report, but the Thurston County Board of Health is looking for people to jump on board. As all of you know, the RCW expanded the Board of Health, so there are three vacancies, and applications are still being accepted until tomorrow at noon. So they need three people, one person from a community organization, advocacy organization, a member of a military family or veteran. They're looking for one person from a marginalized community or a user of public health services, and then one person who is a public health practitioner, like a doctor or certified medical professional. So if you want to apply and you haven't yet, it's due at noon tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. And I know they've been needing people to apply for those positions as well. But with that, we've, we've reached the end of our agenda. I just want to thank this council once again for your professionalism and dealing with what's been a couple very difficult meetings for, for the city of Lacey. I've, I've mentioned this before, that I know everyone here is trying to do the best they can to follow the law and, and do what's best for our community, right? That's why we decided to run as council members, is because we felt like we want, we love Lacey, and we want to support Lacey, and we want to represent the people the best of our abilities. And I, there's no doubt in my mind that that's what you do on, on a regular basis. So I, you know, I've, I've been saying ever since I've been mayor at the end of a council meeting, to keep it classy. I almost felt like at the beginning of this meeting, I should, maybe should start off with saying that at the beginning of the meeting. But, you know, I also want to thank, thank the public as well. You know, whenever there is a big issue out there, I know it's really, it's hard to sometimes look at just the facts when emotions are involved. It's very, it's hard, it's, we're all human, and we all have a perception on what's maybe right and wrong, but we have to follow the law, and that's our standard for what's right and wrong. It's our first standard for what's right and wrong on this council, is we have to follow the law. And so, but it's hard. It's, it's hard to keep calm and, and, and go through the process, but you've, you've done it extremely well, and I just want to commend you on that and thank you. And as I'll continue to say, let's keep it classy, Lacey. Objection. I'll call this meeting adjourned.[1772.11]